Is that my G V?
What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at squeezing multi way. We're gonna be looking at comparing ranges when we are on I C M on the bubble or a chippy. So. Let's try this one six big blinds suited Jack against middle position.
I think it's a fold.
We're the short stack. I think we're inclined to gamble. I think it might just be a jam. Thing is, can play a lot of hands here as.
Look at this here.
Or nearly the contributor.
Do you blind down to just cash sometimes here with your six big ones?
Not really because we don't, I mean, it's hard to say what's at the other tables, but presumably we're like thirty third. Like just guessing.
Oh, the hijack's gotta be super tight defending versus the big stack in this spot.
Yeah.
I'm folding.
How about, how about this?
That's fair.
Tim, I got a question. I got a question. Okay. Would you rather have ace? Deuce offsuit jamming into some unopened ranges from the button? Or would you rather be jam? What do you think's better? Jamming this into a open and a call?
I think Ace Deuce is a lot better against one.
Miles better, I think. Like, one, you have absolute, you have negative fold equity here against a hand that's probably gonna have you at forty percent equity. I just, uh, I, I don't know. I, I don't think this is where you wanna be.
So this is a very tough spot actually because I could see all in being good. I could see folding being. Like, we're so close to the money. It could be conceivable to fold. I'm actually gonna fold. You know?
Yeah.
So it's like you wanna just like squeeze in the money at this point with your six. I don't think we're thirty three on thirty five. Maybe I'm wrong. But my impression was that.
I think, I mean, look at our table. We're, we're.
Looking at the hijack range.
We're eight.
Yeah, you guys know starting range.
Much harder to beat than thirty three, thirty two.
I mean, that's what you're jamming into for the hijack.
So that's the problem. Yeah. I think my idea is like fair enough against low jack, but yeah, hijack's pretty noted.
Yeah, Tim, honestly, like, I think if it was just the low jack, I could. Be okay putting my chips in here. Like, he's gonna have pairs that you're doing well against ace. He's gonna have king ten. In there. He's gonna have queen jack sometimes. So it's like, you're not gonna just be putting your money in bad all the time.
So if you're watching on YouTube, if the table is red, it's I C M and we are right on the bubble thirty five players left to get paid. And if the table is teal, um, we are at chippy. So what about this spot? This is a. Very.
Um, so suited tens are really good here. Um. The problem is queens are not great versus an E P open and a late position. So I think your suited tens are gonna be heavy jams or raises, not jams. You're not gonna jam thirty five too frequently.
See, I think suited tens would be really good against cutoff, but against E P, it's not so good.
Go on. Yeah, there's just one caller is my thing. I think it's gonna, there might be jams. I think it's gonna not all in raise. And maybe jam like or raise king ten more.
I'm calling on the button. It's chippy V.
We got a stuff here. You don't have a calling range, Ken.
No?
No.
No, you do. You do. You're on the button.
You don't have a calling range here, I think. Chippy V? Yeah, I think you're.
I promise you have a, I promise you have a calling range here.
Oh, okay, yeah. I agree, it's a good. Oh, not this all in queen jack.
Six percent though.
Okay.
It's not the very heavy, like six percent of what's your pair?
It's that's, that's, that's equal to the, that's equal to the jam range and the raising range.
Look at this here. Are you doing? What do you do with your ace four suited here?
Uh, probably mucking a, well, I don't know. I'm calling on the button.
Yeah. Can I jam ace four suited sometimes if I feel like I have fold equity?
So. It's not really suited tens. That's what I thought, right? I, I was sure, I was very confident on suited jacks.
Yeah, the suited tens are not great, right?
I would have done like suited jacks and then this king can suit it. Usually that's gonna be good. Um, let's go I T M. So click, click. Okay, so this one we play, we folded.
Boom.
Wow, is he gonna call?
Oh, oh.
Honestly, this isn't, this is an easy fold, I think. The guy's got you covered.
It's it.
Yeah, dude.
Yeah.
Are you gonna, are you gonna bubble the tournament with your pocket jacks because you can't let go of face cards?
Small blind's gotta start. We gotta fold.
It's, uh, let's talk about what small blind's doing here because small blind calls a lot. He was inspected of stuff like he has pocket nines here, right?
Yeah.
I will say, we could call probably because we can still make the money, but I mean, I hate to just spew twelve big lines, but I might call some.
I think he got this.
There's a wide range opposite. I think he shoves with his marginal and, and middle hands and calls with eases kings.
And it's worth. Yeah, actually, he gets calling ranges polarized. He jams a condensed range against us, right? Hands that neither wanna call, call, call or call fold them. And so, yeah, he has like aces and he has like pocket fives.
Yeah, there's an eighteen stack, a twenty two stack, a six stack. Like, this is an easy fold.
I'm calling.
Yeah, the voice of reason, Peter, tell him. Preach it from the rooftops.
It's a photo.
Right. Well, what's your calling range?
Then then.
What's your jack?
Oh, I wanna, I wanna squeeze the juice a little bit sometimes.
So I'll, here's the, I think we can call because a lot of times it's gonna check the answers. It's a no side pot. We're in position post flop, which is pretty nice, right? And even if we lose the eleven bigs, we're still gonna cash.
Okay, so question for you guys. How often is this twelve big line that many?
Uh, not that often.
Not much.
Rarely. We just mentioned, I think it's a balanced polarized range. I think it's like queens plus trapping and some like. Asax and low pairs.
All right, let's have a look.
That's my guess.
In the old days, this would be a call and then both of us would check it down, but nobody does that anymore.
Yeah, there's no gentleman's agreement anymore, Scotty.
Right. I said queen, but it's plus, not bad.
All right, so jacks does terror. Okay, like now against this range?
And Joey, that idea came from you. You were correct that he's gonna call a polarizer.
So are we happy with pocket jacks against this type of range?
Dude, absolutely not. Absolutely not.
It's not too happy, right? I'm looking at like. We could like be ahead of half of it, right?
Still not. Not even, you're not ahead of half. That's like the offsuit combos, like those pairs do not equal like the, the combos of jacks he has there. Like ace jack that you're walking.
Wait, but his calling ranges aces, kings, tens, nines, eights.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, we're ahead of his calling range. That's why I don't mind.
Yeah, we're, we're a bit ahead of his calling range. Maybe not.
So now you guys are saying we're ahead of his falling range.
Wait, you're, are you, you're discounting queen, king and ace queen?
Well, we're ahead of those.
We're slightly ahead.
You wanna, you wanna, you wanna flip for the money?
Oh, I don't want to. No, no, I'm not saying flip, but, but just thinking about where we are. Strange. And I think the problem with him having a properly polarized range there is we jam and he pulls out the stuff that we are beating and he calls the stuff that beats us, right?
Yeah, I, um, I think this is nuts. I'm folding.
Well.
That's all I have to say.
You see this?
Oh, so you're, you're gonna, you're gonna try to, you're gonna, you're gonna farm that point zero two that a perfect opponent yields.
Yeah.
Pens go a little bit more exit on blocks his ace jack off.
So, okay, okay, okay. We wanna play with queens there. We're not calling with ace queen off. The good old ace queen off. You give that on the final table or on the bubble. It's just like.
That's the clearest scam in the book, man.
Yeah. Pocket tens, pocket jacks.
I see jacks the same as ace queen off.
Oh, ace jack suited here. Hopefully.
Uh, you gotta switch the screen.
All right, very interesting.
Oh, wait, no, okay. I thought you were looking at ace jack suited.
Okay, so the pocket fives now at chippy V.
Uh, you're gonna be jamming linearly here, so this is a comfortable call.
I'm ripping it.
That's gonna be, that's probably gonna be bad, Ken, but I'm not gonna say it's bad because.
Jam a couple of low pairs that unblock, like trashy, trashiest bottom of his opening range, like the, like eights and nines, right? Like, so we don't wanna jam those. We can jam a little bit under that.
Yeah, I thought we jam the low ones, raise the, uh, better ones like maybe eights plus, nines plus, something like that, three bet.
I don't, I don't think you jam low ones here. It's gonna be linear. I could be wrong.
A sliver again coming in under his opening range where you get a couple more jams, but then you slow down at his, like, the ones that block his, his raise folds.
I play call here for sure.
That's reasonable.
So it is completely linear, nines plus.
Ace four.
That's your polar.
There, the, exactly. There it is. If you wanna bluff, uh, put, put ace four in the middle.
Okay, but, but this is a raised, so it's not the all in idea, but the raise idea is right that it comes in under. So like eights and sevens are pretty much hundred percent calls and five, sixes and fives have a little bit of three betting.
Yeah, I mean, you got these little, there's, there is a little bit of, a little frequency of that stuff coming in, but, um, I think if you're trying to learn a strategy. Um, and not just memorize ranges, the here, the overall heuristic is probably where you wanna put your brain power.
Oh, but I C M, queen six suited. I think we're strong enough here. What we call?
No.
I, I follow.
Queens are, uh, queens are bad here.
Or the big line.
Queen eight, I'm definitely calling queen.
The big line or thirty.
I think it's queen five.
To symmetric stacks, uh, we're gonna call.
I don't think so. Bump me out of this call.
Uh.
You just call like. You call like the three gappers, I feel like. I feel like you call like, it's kind of like a little, um, river going down the chart of like ten, seven suited, jack seven or jack eight suited. Queen eight or queen nine suited, something like that.
Also, this is an outlier. I'll say we call queen five. This one starts mixing folds and calls and then queen like eight's gonna be in there full.
I think it's just a different.
Oh, this is the, the triangle of ruin, remember?
Yeah, but that, that triangle is at, is at chippy V.
So it's like, it's suited two gappers are the ones that were mainly getting it. Nine, six, ten, seven, jack eight.
So we don't need to defend with the queens there. We just need like suited kings are kind of. You're kind of forced to play.
Yeah.
Jacks, tens, you don't need to.
I see him. Just click fold more.
Not even like suited eights. You need the suited date and extra equity.
Yeah, so the idea of this, this triangle shape here is your ace high and your king high flushes are too good because they're too nutted when they make it. And your ones that have extra equity with the ability to make the straight and the flush. Along the pair access wanna play because they have more chances to do it. And then all the other ones, they just don't, the equity of making the flush doesn't make up for the risk premium of the spot that we're in.
Yeah, it sounds reasonable, Pete. I like it.
Now. Chippy V now. King eight suited. Three.
Uh.
I'm inclined to flick it in.
Man, there's a lot, there, there's a lot of cooks in that kitchen.
But, uh. I, I love that.
But they. I love that suited and we're getting, we're stacking them when we make the flush. So let's go.
Too many.
There's too many.
Kick it in the kitchen. It, it's not gonna come out well for sure.
Are they good cooks or bad cooks?
Oh, they're all bad cooks. If you're all trying to make the. If you're all trying to cook the same thing and they're all bad cooks.
I don't know. King eight's the nuts, I think.
Uh, it's too, it's too good. I agree with Tim. I'm gonna flick in a call. It's just too strong of a hand.
Okay, so what do you squeeze here with?
Man. I think it's gonna be like, so it's two late position ranges. I would not be surprised to see like your suited nines in there maybe sometimes. It's gonna be suited tens.
No way.
I think like basically all.
No suited nines here.
Now, all suited broadways go for it, I think.
Is you, do you have as easy or is it the all in?
It's a huge linear squeeze.
You're at a position, man, like, and it's, there's two callers. It's gonna be mainly jams, but there will be an all in, uh, non-all in component because that's what aces are gonna wanna do.
So we say king ten suited jams. No, yes, jams.
I think.
I would.
Robable against a hijack range.
Nah, 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 nah. I bet the farm that king ten suited jams here.
I said, yeah, I think he's late, you know?
That the farm. Okay, so this one would be a call, right?
Yes, I would call here.
Yeah.
And by the way, those suited nines, those suited nines are in there.
You crazy. How are you gonna suit the nine here?
Well, dude, it's a hijack cutoff small blind. It's just really wide ranges.
You're never gonna jam king nine suited here, right?
Sure.
Right?
You don't, you don't, you don't sound so sure, Louis.
Against the late positions, it's bad to have a seven or an eight. It's not so bad to have a nine here.
Yeah. It's interesting that they build out of, they don't build out a three bet fold range where it's like, I might like aces, kings, ace five off.
I was wrong about that. I thought. I thought they would. Um, if there's only one caller, Tim, there's definitely gonna be a not all in sizing. I think it's just the fact that there's like, you pick up ten percent of your stack. Or so here by just, no, I'm sorry. It's like twenty five percent of your stack almost. Uncont, no, 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 it's not. It's, it's closer to ten. Um, uncontested.
Be the settings. They might not just like click the setting to allow it. Cause like if you give this all over all options, I kind of feel like it's gonna find a three bet with aces and some trashy blow, you know?
So suited three gappers, basically. And then offsuit tens and then the straight, the ugly straight ones.
Okay, and the way your suited queens are in there on that one.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, but it's deeper, I think.
More I C M.
The other one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no I C M here as well.
Yabba dabba doo.
Oh, no, man, no, man.
That's the, I see that one.
I hope we change his name. I hope all my.
Come on, like.
O G changed their names.
What does low jack have when he black calls two big blinds on the stone bubble? Like, give me a break.
Pocket aces. Yeah, the nuts. What is that? Come on, fold.
It's aces. It's aces.
He doesn't have a calling range. And ace nine and ace ten.
Yeah, look at those pairs. Aces, queens, kings, jacks.
Ace ten suited.
We're even, we're even, we're even behind like the combos that he's using to balance his nuts. That's how bad ace three is here.
Behind his bluffs. Yep.
Okay, and then what do we jam here? Ace jack?
Aces, aces.
Uh, it's gonna be very top heavy. I'd say ace king.
What do you do with these jacks suited there? Diamonds.
Hold, hold, snap, hold, snap, snap, fuck.
Yikes, yikes, yikes.
Make myself a coffee. That's what I'm doing.
That's a ace jacks mega yikes. I think ace queen suited is an interesting question because I don't know the answer for ace queen suited.
You got them big blinds. How bad can it be?
Kings and aces.
Dude. Well, dude, you think about that, think about that low jack range, man.
We're not. Low jack range. Small pairs.
Okay, yeah. So it's gonna be, we're gonna be very tight here, like six percent, seven percent?
No, no, I'm thinking ace queen suited plus ace king and king, maybe queens are going in.
And what about the silver special?
No, I don't think it's, I don't.
None.
It's gonna be completely linear.
You're only playing two hands, kings and aces.
Stone bubble.
He might be, oh.
Special, look at that.
Oh.
How, how could you?
Oh, I'm gonna be sick. I'm gonna be sick.
Hey, by, by the way, by the way, I was right about ace queen. It is kinda like, that's the indifferent spot. It's like, what do I do with this hand?
Oh.
But I, I did not expect all these suited bluffs at all.
No.
And fold on hold. Jamming ace two suited, okay?
On the bubble.
Why are we jamming the hand that, that we just saw that is destroyed by the low jack range?
Well, I think it's because you just get folds. They have a very hard time calling. And if you're blocking aces because you have the suited ace, I mean, it's, it's. It's a, uh, high variance line. I would use caution.
Like, like, like Kenneth Keppel would say, you're just playing the bottom of the deck here.
So, I mean, if we go back to low jack range, he folds like jacks against us, I mean, easy, right? He folds.
Oh, absolutely.
Ace jacks suited, easy.
He probably folds everything but like aces, kings and like maybe. His ace, I don't know.
He folds the, the, uh, I don't know. I don't know about them. I don't know about these big combos.
He's got a.
You can always, you can generally kind of tell this off of the, is it above the all in range or below the all in range? The only hand that's above the all in range is aces, really. You know, everything that's below the all in range is mainly looking for a fold.
That's usually true.
This is, by the way, this is a spot I would say we're playing bottom of the deck at. That's just ace blockers.
Uh, this is a jamalama.
No.
I think it's a three bet if they allow us.
Okay, so, so count up the chips, count up the chips. You got two, four, six, there's ten in the middle. Then you're increasing your stack uncontested by thirty three percent.
There's eight and a half in the middle.
Who's gonna call your ten? No one. Who, you think E P, uh, E P has two guys left to worry about. Is he gonna call your ten? No, gonna push or fold?
I don't think there's gonna be much of a non-all in raising size here, but there might be. I don't.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think forty, forty we might think about.
Too strong, man.
Oh, all right, nevermind. I take it back. Take it back.
Just wait.
We threw it.
The pocket queens, I would be like, okay, okay, okay. We're gonna get scanned, but kings, kings thing is you can squeeze and then maybe deal with the scan, right? Whereas pocket queens, you're just getting scanned.
We're gonna raise to nine.
Uh.
No, don't do it. Don't do it.
At I C M.
Don't do it. I'm getting really nervous.
Guys, this is just a call. Nines and tens wanna call.
Yeah, I agree. Not a great raise.
Either, please don't call here.
Please don't call.
Oh, we're gonna do one of the two things here. We're gonna fold or we're gonna raise.
Nope, this is along the pair access and we are the big stack in position. It's gonna call.
Honestly, Peter, Peter might be right. I mean, you're gonna have some calls on the button here. I just think in an I C M environment. You're not gonna be calling nearly as much as raising or folding.
I would never go here.
I guess that's true, but there's still I C M on the flop and it's kind of fun to.
Your call.
And, uh, yeah, it's kind of nice to be able to then apply.
Oh, good. I was folding it. Yay.
Yeah, me too, Scotty. Don't worry.
I was folding too because of the eighteen big blind stack.
Yeah, these guys are crazy.
Guys, we're gonna be able to play post flop in position as the big stack.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
We're gonna be able to realize our equity.
Peter, Peter, you're, you're in a fairy tale right now. There's two guys left who are.
They're not jamming.
Oh, can you swear?
Well, it's still bubbling. We're the big stack. I mean, fifty, forty two really has to be hard about jamming into us.
Would you be?
Like in theory, maybe in practice, they punch it off with pocket eights here, but in theory, they need to be really careful.
Like you can't rule out anything here. So we need to be cautious. You're, you're honestly like, look at this all. It's zero point zero zero zero.
The caveat there, Louis, is that's first perfect opponents.
Uh, yeah.
On top of that.
That, that hand is gonna be able to apply pressure post flop pretty well in position against those guys. And like when we squeeze, we really don't wanna squeeze hands like nine, ten, eight, nine suited. They wanna realize their equity.
Well, they also just really interact poorly with what they're flattening and opening the parts that you wanna target, right? Like, it's just. They're not great cards to have.
This here is not an easy situation. What are we gonna do?
I, man, dude, I'm just calling here like whatever.
You're calling.
Just the hijack have.
Why would you call six? Don't you think six is a bit big once somebody's already paying? How's that your business here?
You got, you got king jack, man.
Yeah.
I'm folding.
I would fold here, but I wanna know what, what should we, you know, bite the shit?
What's the worst card year? What's the worst card you're calling? What are you doing with king queen off?
I honestly, I think I would, um, king queen off, I think it's easy. It's just a fold. But king queen suited or ace jack suited, I think you're in the, you just rejam both, right? So why don't we jam here? Let's just put it in his face. No? Oh, no, I don't want to anymore. I change.
I, to be honest. To be honest, I don't know, man. You might jam here sometimes. It's kind of a goofy spot because one guy's all in.
Man, I mean, this guy, man, he could just have a monster and we could be ahead like this and. I can, I see it jamming some models here.
I think I'm calling, man.
So fold, let's fold.
Yeah.
Oh.
You tell you what, Yalan, it's so easy for me because when I get in these spots, I'm never, I'm never really a net, right? So when I see this, I'm like, wow, if I'm a net here, it's a big, really big, a big issue, right? I don't think so. So I'm, I'm okay over folding here. It's calling. It's like, yeah. Oh, that's a good call.
That's what I say. King queen off is the interesting one for me, but like even like king ten suited, it's kinda like whatever.
So was ace ten suited.
I, that's the thing, right? What do you do with it? You just call?
I would call it here in game.
Makes a lot of sense, right?
Mm hmm. I think it's fine. I think honestly, I think king jack is a pretty slam dunk just call spot. Like, I, I would feel bad folding this hand in this spot.
The reason why I thought it might fall is because.
This here, are you not worried about this ring? Like we beat.
I mean. It's gotta be pretty binary how we handle this. Like it's, it's not like it's gonna be. I mean, okay, if you get a king and then like you're getting tripled off into that kinda sucks, but. You get, everyone's gotta stay honest. Like you get to see the cards at showdown because the guy's all in.
Okay, yeah. Makes sense.
He's not, he's not incentivized to triple off.
You gotta squeeze here, do you?
Oh, man, this is, this is a little more scary.
Why?
Because it's like, you're, you're a bit deeper here and you're at a position.
It's six. We can make it like fifteen and then fold, no?
I think we can rip it too, if you want.
I, I, I was gonna say like, if I'm raising, I kinda wanna rip.
The opposite ones probably are just ripping here.
Ace king, I agree. If we wanna raise, just. Yeah, uh, both.
What? Makes sense.
Ace jack is the box though. Look at ace jack. Like you, you just find it folds with ace jack?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'll three bet it sometimes and fold, yeah. That's, that's probably basically my strategy.
I am not squeezing with eights here.
No, I'm not either. I'm, I'm just playing call with eights.
Hmm.
Am I playing call with eights? Am I? I had to think about, I gotta think about that. I said that so confidently and I'm not so confident in that.
Yeah. Uh, back to I C M on the bubble.
Man, this is just a fold, I think.
I think this is a spot where you just look at whether or not bubble protection is activated.
Yeah, that's a good answer.
I think that is a good jam spot. We block ace, we have ace ten suited, enough equity, hijack, uh, we have a lot for the big equity cutoff is something like cat. So I think that's a really good jump spot.
All right, so if bubble protection is activated.
Oh, Dominic, we don't wanna jam ace king off for sixty, but we wanna bubble with ace ten suited?
Look, we, we have a guaranteed mint cash. Just fold the hand.
Yeah.
Get out the way.
There's no reason.
What are we doing?
I mean, I'll, I'll say here, the one thing though is like, in theory, it's not quite guaranteed. We're probably close to thirtieth ourselves. If I have one, six big lines.
If I have twelve big blinds at this point, I'm penciling the money into my accounts already.
You're guiding in theory with opponents playing well, it's a little more complicated. Like in practice, people punt.
But, okay, okay, you can go either way.
I can't fold it, but it's mostly.
I think we're like sweating, making it a little bit. I think we're a little worried.
Did you, guys here, Kenneth Keppel, the, uh, the chippy V warrior? You heard, you heard.
What do you want me to tell you?
The pure, what did you say, Ken? You say, I'm not folding here.
I'm not gonna fold it, I said. I just can't do it.
Look at this damn thing. It's folding most of the time. It's not up to.
No. You see, there's twenty six percent jam. That's like a hundred percent to me.
Yeah, you're.
Ay caramba, ay caramba.
Talking about Kenneth Keppel, the champion of global poker.
That's, that's true. That's true.
I know.
He's taking it to, he's taking it to him hard over there.
Yeah. Uh, call.
There you go, Ashwin.
No.
Dude, what do you, no, 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 no.
That's not right, Ashwin, at all.
This is, this is maybe a fold. This is, this is maybe a fold. It's gonna be a call. Mixing calls and folds is my, my.
Yeah, really deep.
Mostly fold, yeah.
Okay, chippy V.
Squeezer, this is a good one. You're deep enough. This is, Sam's gonna play well.
Okay, and you have that fairly linear squeezing range against multiple players. Like I'd call it more against one opponent than against two, right? Like against one opponent, it makes a pretty attractive call.
I call seven more here and fold.
You can fold this. This, this is a fold. I'm fairly confident. Not confident enough.
That's so good.
That's a, that is fat.
Um, okay, like what are we gonna do? Put the money in.
Jam, jam.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, this one's.
I agree.
Hundred percent. Never escaping it.
This is actually way more. Look how wide this is. This is way wider than I anticipated.
Do you not go all in here or something?
Away.
Low, low, low frequency loss.
No, Louis, you're right. This is a silver special. You're right.
It's eight equal stack, ten big blinds. I think we're gonna fold.
Yeah, Nick's right.
This is just like the one we looked at. We looked at this already.
Louis, Louis is walking you down a dangerous path here, guys.
No, the suited aces are the, are the jams. They never could call.
Guys aren't nets.
Yep.
Dangerous.
We saw like that exact solution already.
Put them all in the ace five and say, cross your, close your eyes and click jam and fold the other garbage around it.
No, Ken, try to play this instead of playing Ken Teo.
That's too many.
Is this consider, uh, that you're on the bubble?
Yeah, this one's on, the red table's on the bubble.
Oh, this is chippy V.
The blue one.
I mean, you can probably jam this. It's kind of whatever.
What do you mean?
Y'all blew me up for, for jamming king jack suited earlier. Now you wanna jam queen tens? Oh, it's chippy V.
I was gonna say, this is a chippy V scenario.
You got it. Oh my goodness, I'm on torture.
Okay, well, king ten maybe, maybe, maybe I'm punting here.
Are you folding here?
No, I'm not.
I'm probably flicking a call.
What is?
Yeah, man, I got, dude, I got the rebuy bullet ready to go, man. It's chippy V.
All right, six big blind. We already lost this game.
Oh, six. Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. Like the game's over. We need a miracle anyways.
For a better spot.
About a patience.
The clock's ticking, man. You only got so many minutes to rebuy.
Ken, this is, this one's for you. What do you do here, Ken?
Uh, chippy V? Oh, ICM fold.
You fold?
What's the best pair we jam?
Oh. Can what?
Nah, man. Dude, you guys are crazy. That's way too wide.
Jacks.
Jacks or queens. I'm thinking like.
No, it's way too tight.
I don't know. I think, I think we have a lot of ICM pressure because look, we're.
Alright, so let's walk through it real quick. Walk through.
So we're probably like twenty-eight.
Right, so there's a six big blind stack, five need to bust to, for you to get paid. Like, and it's EP, EP one, the two big stacks. Like, I mean, how, why do we really think we're gonna be here? Like, are you gonna bubble the tournament with pocket eights?
Are you folding pocket tens from your twelve big blind?
I am.
Pocket tens is the interesting question, okay? I'm gonna flat pocket tens probably.
Ew, no, no flats, no flats.
No flapping. Having two ten against CP is bad. You need to jam.
Zero flats at our range.
Five, fives might have that.
But you're, you're in the small blind. Like, you're definitely gonna have some completes here.
We're not getting a direct pile out.
You, you don't have much calls there, I think. Calling, calling frequency is like zero.
Your SPR is gonna be one if you call.
Jam.
Eight.
Yes.
Nick, Nick was dialed in and, uh, yeah, there's not really a call range.
Yeah, no calls.
I'm a nit, man. Look at that. I was saying like tens. I was playing tens like I'm playing.
No, 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 we heard you. You said jacks.
I said, I said jacks.
I said there.
Nah, 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 nah. I said I'm calling tens. And that's when you went on your tirade about not being calls.
Okay. I hope you're right.
I know.
Oh, oh.
Man, I'm gonna put these guys in.
But like, what's up with low jack calling six big blinds on a four big blind stack?
We're now.
We're raised, we're raised, falling if the small blind.
Forty-two big blinds, so you're not going all in.
It gives him room to fold still, like.
That's, that's actually a pretty big mistake, I guess.
Is it?
It's not a big mistake. It's a frequency mistake. Mixing is because there's same V.
I think it's kind of saving you from the small blind. You don't really wanna run forty big blinds there.
That's exactly what it is. It's this. If a small blind comes in, you fold all that.
Uh, call all day here.
Yeah, I'm calling here, but I wouldn't be surprised if it's a mistake.
Yeah, I would call, I think.
Yeah, with the wheel, definitely.
I guess we call our suited aces and we're calling like what? Ace ten off, ace jack off, something like that?
This might have some s- silver special rips.
Maybe.
I don't think so.
It's gotta be completely, it's gotta be completely linear.
No.
Yeah. Fuck, eight, six, eight, seven, eight, eight suited all fold. Just those wheels, like, three to four to five.
Yeah.
Hmm, I would fold, I think.
We have a three bet bluff here. ICM, I think calling's okay.
I don't think you're folding here.
Yeah, I don't think I'll fold with this, this deep or this deep.
Maybe not. Maybe it's just a call. I don't think we're going bananas or anything.
How about raise? So do you squeeze these guys sometimes then?
It's gonna be completely linear, top heavy stuff, I think. Like, I think if you are, it's gonna be like, I don't know.
King, queen, jack suited.
King, jack, maybe, yeah.
We have no raise folds? Hmm, worse.
Completely suited, yeah.
The low suited kings.
Not many bluffs, uh. Gotta find the worst ones.
Well, it's not many value hands either.
I hate those off, those low off suited aces.
Yeah, I'm just saying the raise ranges.
Ever.
So it's mixing, it's not calling pure.
I don't know. I kind of like playing the low off suited aces because like you know what you're doing if you get four bit jam, like.
No, no, I, I, I under. I got no problem pre-flop getting jammed on. It's on the flop.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's not fun. That's not funny.
Uh, I think I would probably call here.
I called jack ten, folding jack.
Feels like a call.
I think this is the bottom of the range.
Look at this, look at that small, look at what that small blind is.
Small blinds calling.
Yeah, the small blind's gonna jam flop like a lot of the time, I think.
What's small blinds range here?
Flattening. Strong, very strong.
Yeah.
Endgame aces plus.
Ignore small blinds range, so.
Yeah, no one, no one does this.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do. Your games must not be soft enough, Nick.
They're not.
Well, this is GTO.
Yeah, that was, that was correctly played. That range.
So two, two on the bubble. Do we complete on the bubble?
Yeah, I mean, it's a suited two gap.
Easy call.
No.
No, 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 no.
It's not that easy a call.
Yeah, it is.
Kenneth Keppel's on the, on the bubble. He's ready to fight for every bit of chippy V here.
So what are we doing with, uh, what are we doing with seven, four? What are you doing with seven, four? What are you doing with eight, four?
Yeah, eight, four is out, seven, four is in.
Old eight, four.
Call fives. I can't get behind that really.
Eight is too high. Okay.
No, it's, it's probably, yeah.
Those.
Four fours, four fives, but seven.
Two gappers.
Seven four though.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
And then, oh, look at this here. Very interesting. We don't complete with queen, jack. King, jack off, folding, pre-flop. I've never folded king, jack here.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Holding queen, jack here. Win ten, hmm, one big, really? Feels bad to fold that jack ten here.
There's a lot of reverse implied odds with those hands, all eight, five suited. You pretty much know where you're at.
I agree. Playing the bottom end of the deck.
We can, can we call this? I guess we can probably, right?
On the button.
Seems okay.
Yeah, I think that's.
A lot of our pocket pairs.
I think it's gonna mix calls and folds, probably mostly. Call.
I'm flicking it in.
I don't think you can raise pocket sevens against a EP, Ashwin.
I, yeah, well, we saw one earlier where like you could, you a sliver of raising of like sixes and fives, but you don't need to focus on it. Call.
Oh, especially bubble.
What are we, what are we jamming? Like we're jamming like jacks, tens?
Maybe I wouldn't jam tens, I don't think, on the bubble.
Ooh.
Alright, so we're not really jamming. We're three betting jacks.
Eight, nines and tens are falling. Is that what I'm saying here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's just fold, so just fold sevens.
You have your glasses on, Ken? You have your glasses on? Nines are folding.
I'll say, um, for anyone who's having trouble, colorblind people can't really see the difference between calls and folds in this. Um, thing. I can't really see it reliably.
Okay, so fold, fold. So I'll give you a hint. Fold sevens and fours.
No, no, I got it. But like I can see that there's a sliver of calling on fours and there's a slip in that frequency of calling on sevens, but like it's hard to tell actually.
Yeah, this is interesting. I mean, at forty, I'm like set mining with everything, like, cause I can easily find folds.
Yeah, yeah, I am as well. So when it's, you can do it, it's up, Nick. That's what it means.
Nick, also, um, that was, it's kind of a fictitious spot because that was like on the money bubble.
It was five for, five, five for the money, but you're still forty big blinds deep, like. I mean, is, is it worried about just getting cooler? Like set over set, five from the money, like?
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of why I was saying it's kind of like a fictitious spot. Like it's.
But it's funny.
When do you ever find yourself forty effective with the entire table that close to the money bubble?
Jam it.
I guess the problem is also, um, early position don't stack offset loose with ICM pressure. So, uh, our inputted thoughts are a little bit less as on chippy V.
Squeeze her.
Damn it.
Yeah.
Uh, dude, dude, this is an easy jam.
Okay, you guys don't squeeze her. Cause I would play it like a screen. I would play it like, uh, kings, aces, no? Ace king, I'm squeezing here, I'm not. Yeah, okay, may, maybe going all in is good because you're gonna do it.
Lily, there's already ten big blinds in the pot.
If we're like sixty deep.
Already in the pot.
If we're like sixty deep, I three bet this, but a forty I jam it.
Okay.
A fifty.
Oh, okay. I know what I wanna do here. Ken, what do we do?
I mean, call. Wait, we're small blind? Uh, yeah, I'm calling.
You're calling, right?
Yeah.
Nah. A suited ten against the two early positions.
I'm a fish. What can I say? I got ace ten suited. Let's go.
I'm a fish. What can I say? I'm gonna fold.
It's a pip off. It's a pip off.
What do you mean a pip? It's two pips on.
Pips.
Alright, so, are, are these ranges so tight mostly because it's multi-way? Well, this one's ICM.
Multi-way and ICM.
And under the gun, plus under the gun one is the two tight, like strongest ranges.
And double out of position.
Ken, look at this.
I understand that part of it. I just, I just, uh, I guess I expected this to be. I, I, I guess it seems like the multi-way is the bigger factor than ICM and how tight these ranges are. Or you think it's like equal?
No, the biggest factor is clearly ICM.
Okay, honestly, you could look at this, you could look at the chippy V version of this. Like Louis has got this range, um. And it's pro, I wouldn't be surprised to see it maybe jamming this. It's definitely gonna VPip this at chippy V, thirty effective.
Cool. It's so interesting how far off I am in some of these spots. Yeah, I mean, I actually lost a big pot with this last night in ICM versus Ace King. I defended, I was on the button, I think, though, even with Ace ten suited. At, uh, I just lost heaps versus Ace King.
I think it's just one of those things you kind of have to think like, if everyone else is adjusting their ranges tighter. Like you really need to think about what you're entering the pot with as the third person or fourth person.
Yeah, so in the non-ICM, you can see it's an easy call.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, look at the difference. So it i- it is raising, it's raising some, it's calling a lot. But like with the ICM, you're just, you're, you're just not in there.
Yeah.
And it's heavy like, look. Yeah, you see the bluffs, you see these polar bluffs coming from the wheels. You see some of the ace jack in there. Like, all that's, all of that stuff goes away really when you have this ICM. Like you can, you see these offsuit like ace five, ace four, ace three at some frequency. But, um, I don't know, man. I, I don't even know if you really need to like get in the weeds with that kind of stuff.
Yeah, small blind versus two EP, hell, yeah.
So like, you're basically two pips tighter in the suited area. And then look at pocket jacks or Ken, have you ever folded pocket jacks or?
Yes, he has. Uh, probably, I mean, like one out of ten times maybe?
Now, Ken becomes a super, uh, chippy V warrior on these.
Oh, really? The chippy V warrior.
He becomes a super scion. Like the, the chippy V knowledge that he's been not using all along comes out on the bubble.
I thought ICM meant, until today, I thought ICM meant I can't miss.
And he becomes a super scion on the bubble. He plays perfect chippy V on the bubble. Go figure. We're, we're working on it. Okay, five, three suited, bottom end of the deck. Think this is.
I'm calling. Eh, it's a, it's, it's a one gapper call.
Okay.
The heart of. Oh wait, chippy V.
Oh my god.
Easy.
Jam.
Let's make another one.
Jam chip, jam chip, jam, uh, ICM.
Two, two, I'm all in it.
Damn.
Chippy V is too easy. Let's go back to ICM. Oh, my option.
Fold.
Not there.
Everyone.
You can't.
Stop talking.
It's, Louis, it's multi-way, man.
All in.
That's what I'm saying, man. I wanted to tree bet because this is the, like, it's a suited wheel king. At ICM, this is the stone cold nuts. But, um, I mean, I'm not going all in.
Maybe a twenty-five.
I would make it five and see what develops, but, uh, going all in, I don't know.
Seems a bit risky, right?
Yeah.
Risky maneuver. It's his favorite line lately.
Uh, is this good enough?
Risky maneuver.
Yeah, I think we got no choice.
Yeah, it must be. We have a choice, actually.
This is gonna be.
Hey, wait, wait. Do you call? You might call here, actually. You might, you might just call.
Anyone on the theme fold?
I was a little bit deeper, I would call. This one.
I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna fold, call and jam sometimes. I think it's gonna be like.
Pure here.
I am purely indifferent. Hundred percent jamming.
Yeah, I'm jamming. I'd call if I was a bit deeper.
Yeah, this one's gonna be a difference. It's gonna do all three.
I love this, still wide enough.
Ooh, not folding. Good jam.
There's no calling.
Strong.
Opinion won't fold.
I've been hurt with a screen on the bubble, I, ICM. I've been hurt. There's no way I'm blaming you.
My therapist says it's not my fault.
Emotional scars heal differently than physical ones.
I think, yeah, I think we have to jam instead of, right, instead of three betting.
It feels, uh, okay, there's two guys in, okay, okay.
Sure. Yeah.
Chippy.
I mean, I'm folding.
A jack, dude.
It probably closed. I'm folding.
I think you still hold.
Why are you guys holding nets?
I'm calling like V four suited.
Okay, this guy's really.
Just like. And you just have reverse implied odds, like he has.
Yeah, man, dude, there's one caller. Just call. This is crazy. Call.
I I like. Calling is my favorite option. This guy's so short.
We're gonna call all suited queens and we're gonna skip some of the low suited jacks.
Yeah, I think this is like the one Jack that folds.
I think it's called also good stuff.
Hey, look at, look at. Look at Nikolai.
Yeah. La la la.
La 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 la.
I'm back from the mail cart and still haven't forgot what I'm doing.
Call, call.
Oh, this is.
I'm a jam.
I'm against.
The suited ten.
Don't fold it and you're fine.
You thought the jammer was a thing of the past.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, the bubble.
Easy fold.
This is an easy fold.
Because of this guy, right?
Yeah, why would you wanna play pot here?
What is he doing with this six bigs? How often is he?
Yes, this is. In real life, yes. Ten if we were raising over the RFI um. It'd be like eight big blinds or so, I think. Or no, 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 it would be like closer to ten because there's a caller.
I don't know how deep we were.
It's usually like four X the big blind.
We were twenty two big, so it'd be like seven.
Seven or eight, yeah.
Surprise queen sevens in there. I thought this was like a snap fall. It was on the cusp.
Yep.
No, you still fold to a jam at that point. If you three bet and get jammed on.
Yeah.
Old.
I'll call one.
Yep, I mean, I mean. I mean, come on. I would, I would flick it in. You're in the big blind.
I think it's close, though.
Not no set, no bet.
But uh considering that these is lowest pairs are called, yeah.
The whole idea of ICM is that the chips you lose are worth more than the chips you win. So you can't set mine with the same odds in ICM.
Yeah.
And we're not even getting the odds. So who's the Chippy V warrior now LP?
I mean, we are. We're big blind.
Almost getting the odds was just a lot. Oh, but. Get you another cup of coffee, Ken. Let's spit some fire.
At least I was only.
I'm trying to make sense of why sixes call and sevens fold.
Well, like.
It has to do with their jet with their ranges too.
I mean, but I I mean, everything. Okay.
Sevens, seven, sevens and eights probably block the bottom of their ranges. So if if you call with sevens, they're more likely to have their value range instead of their. Bottom range.
It's only that any hot, any top pair is gonna get the chips in and like we're just gonna get out flopped every fucking flop almost. So like.
I wouldn't worry too much about these little slight differences.
What's special about sixes that not not?
It's it's some sort of, it's some way that sixes interacts with their ranges. I wouldn't get too worried about it. I would just try to understand the uh.
I'm sure it's because they're raising seven X that they fold, like they're raising like King seven or something. And so we want to be able to get that hand fold, but it's not a big deal.
I I feel like you could honestly just take those uh those four hands cut and like play just like nines and eights instead if you wanted to simplify, you know?
Why would you guys like do that?
Do what?
Play nines and eights because it suits you here.
Well, if if uh if it's simplifying a strategy that you can't actually. Uh implement because you can't remember all this shit in real life.
Yeah, you're not simplifying or modifying the core of the strategy. I think it's a disaster if you do that.
Yeah, I I agree. I'm gonna call something call like call something low, call something.
I think what you see here is that you're not supposed to be here with bears.
But here, Louis, Louis, here, here's the argument for why you, why it's not just simplifying those low pairs. Those low pairs may be overspecified by how specifically we know what the ranges of the EP two and the cutoff are.
Exactly.
You know, so the solver is playing perfectly against those specified ranges. Your opponent, it's not just that your opponents don't find all the bluffs. It's we don't know what their ranges are and that gets fuzzy enough that I think.
I was that gonna help us? I was that gonna help us?
No, Scotty, I think that was a really good point. Scotty, I think that was really key point. Like, we're playing against like a big mishmash of ranges. We're not playing against like a cleanly defined type range.
But we also wanna be good against the better players.
Agree on that, but I strongly disagree.
I think if you're looking for simplification for this, modify. I think just fold anything below nine.
Well, hey, 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 okay, so check it out. Alright, so like Scotty said, like this range right here is very specific. To like what the other ranges are. I think like memorizing the overarching heuristics is probably what you wanna like aim to do. So. You wanna understand like nines, eights and sevens are bad. Because they interact with components of what these guys have, like the ones that would fold if you were to play aggressively. So it's like memorizing nine, eight and seven in a vacuum is not what you wanna do. You wanna memorize nine, eight and seven here because of how it interacts with their range. If you're playing with a guy who doesn't have nines, eights and sevens. In his range in game because he's a nit or he just doesn't find like King nine, King eight, King seven opens or whatever. Then like it's probably fine, but like understanding like the driving mechanisms behind it is probably what you wanna focus on as opposed to like. Trying to memorize some like. Well, yeah, memorizing some kind of magic.
Darren, that's spot on. That's spot on, like you just said.
Right. I get into the question of, to answer the question of why sixes and fours are not fives is because ace five suited is the solver special.
And and you're probably right, Scotty. That's probably exactly the reason, to be honest. I'd still rather play just sixes and fours than fifty percent of sixes, fours, threes and twos, you know what I mean? If I was gonna do it.
Let me.
And to be honest, a lot of people do that. A lot of people do that and I I I don't think that's a mistake. I think like that's a big like racer edge simplification. A lot of those guys do that.
You should just fold.
Yeah, or that, or just fold. That's the, that's the simplification.
That's the spot around the big blind which we are always playing our bears and here we're clearly not doing. So just fold.
Louis, roll over, Louis, roll over, roll over the, roll over the EV of those things. If we skip all that EV, I bet it's nothing. Yeah, well, actually, it's not as bad as I thought. I I I thought we were gonna get away with it and say that, look, the EV is like point oh one, but it's not. It's actually pretty good.
Yeah, I played perfectly post flop to multi way out of position.
Yeah, okay.
Well, two, threes and fours are gonna play perfectly. They're gonna flop a setter. They're gonna fold.
Alright.
I would fold here.
You would hope.
You guys.
Uh, yeah, I think I just wanna let this go.
I like my eighteen big blinds. Let's keep them.
Oh, let it go. Fold.
What?
Fold.
Pocket queens, man.
Dude, it's a, it's a jam and a call. Like he snapped it off. Did you see how fast this solver called that? This is actually.
How are we gonna fold ace king here or pocket queens? I need to talk to myself here.
They they both have ace king. We're putting it in. Good luck to us.
No.
I think it's a fold.
They both have ace king. They both have ace.
Thank you, Nick.
I mean, we're ahead of some pairs hijacks gonna have where either even though I'm gonna open worse, joke and jam worse pairs and call some worse pairs, but man, it's dicey.
So I know what the solution is. It's to fold, but my heart wants to play cards.
Dude, this, this is, this is mega yikes, man. This is mega yikes.
Full Jack, absolutely.
Wow.
Yeah. All queens.
All ace king. Suited.
All ace king.
So ace king suited is a really interesting one to me like uh I I don't know if I could have found the ace king suited folds.
Honestly, who's gonna fold the church?
But not ace king suited.
You know, unless like. Oh, which reminds me. Okay, I think it's time to show it. Ken, do you have the Jeremy Chanahan?
Oh, I didn't run it. You wanna run it while you do a couple more of these?
Uh, yeah, just wanna show it real quick.
I played all night, so I didn't get up early this morning to be able to do it. So this is.
Well, you get it. Honestly, it's a good segue. You can actually just show the hand because it's a pretty interesting one. I mean, you did end up running it, right? Like we ran it that night.
He sent me a hand history, so I'm not sure. What he sent me. Honestly, I forget now. I'm like, I got all. Was up to four thirty playing, so.
Okay, I think the easiest way for me to show it is this one.
You got it, Louis. You got it. You got it.
I'm gonna put it in HRC because he sent me the hand history for that.
So. Forget the story here. So how this goes is basically. Pocket nine open jams. For seven big blinds. Oh, this is a final table of the Merry Monster Stack last Sunday.
Oh, I did run this.
And this is our friend Jeremy Chan. So. Um, pocket nine open jams. And then Chester poker, who's a pretty big red, pretty successful player. Smooth call the the seven big blinds. And then action is on Jeremy, who was in the small blind. And he's looking at ace king. Pre flop and he's wondering what to do here.
With C I CM situation.
Final table.
Very big, honestly, very big, okay?
Final, there's a one big blind stack at the table.
There's a.
Yes, and uh.
Oh, gee.
A little more context. This is like a, I think, six thousand man field or three, four thousand man field. It's a bit very big field. And these pay jumps at this point are worth about a thousand dollars a pop. In a twenty five dollar entry. Yes, that's the other part, a twenty five dollar entry. So.
Yeah, so. Basically, looking at the action, Jeremy went with the fold. What do you guys think you should? What do, what would you guys do with ace king here?
Snap fold.
Fold. Yeah.
It's really tough. And I mean, we were watching. I'm like, you gotta fold. What are you gonna do?
Yeah, the honestly, when we were watching it, the the uh the opinions were very split. There was a lot of like. Kind of condolence like, oh, well, man, you played a good game. I wonder if it even folds to just the open jam if the other guy doesn't get in there. This is, this is the answer.
This is the solution here. So you see here ace king off is losing.
A lot.
A lot of money.
It was, it was losing five hundred and some dollars.
Yeah, look at, look at that. Ace king off is twice. As unprofitable as kings is a profitable call. So it's twice as bad calling with. You're losing twice as much than you're making by calling with kings. That's how bad ace king off is here.
Look at pocket queens here.
What about um? If if the queens don't get in there.
It's a, so the reason that it's such a fold is because this guy's tournament life is at stake and there's a pay jump online already.
Yeah.
If uh the queens never called, we're snap calling.
Yeah.
Even with those two shortish.
Yeah. And we could get a free.
Nick.
We could get a free chip off this hand.
Yep. I would agree with you. And like. Know that this guy's at stake, so we. Honestly, that one point six big blind guy, he is gonna be in the big blind in like two hands, right? Or one hand, whatever it is.
So this, this situation here is very similar.
It's reminiscent, isn't it?
Look that, look at the solution, same solution.
Yeah.
Uh, and yeah, pocket queen here is a fold.
So going back to his team, we we. When we talked about if. If it was just the nines raising. And then it folds to us.
He's just shocked.
Do we can? Do we consider not? Well, we're not, we're not shoving. We're we're not getting a hold. With that one point six, are we ever folding the ace king here?
It's a good question. To be honest, Scotty, we didn't look at it, but I'm pretty confident you're still gonna put it in. I don't know a hundred percent, though. I'm not gonna say like it's a slam dunk spot, but.
Feel like I'm a hundred percent sure it's a goal.
We dominate a lot of this range and everything else we're flipping against, sure. But there's that one point six in the pay jump that is.
Right, right. There's a median dollars in like two hands, probably. Unless he don't.
Yeah.
And well, yeah, that's probably part, right?
I would run it again and look at that, but the hand history sent me isn't copy pasting in HRC.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, moving on.
Everyone is three betting a little bit here sometimes.
Um, man.
Nope.
No, I'm not. I'm not.
Why not?
You're on the bubble. But you're on the hijack. You're on the hijack, man.
Doesn't matter. It's like the solver special, but like you have King six instead.
No, I wouldn't find the King six.
Fold.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, you know, if you're, if you're three betting, if you're calling five, four suited. At nearly an equal frequency, sure, that's fair.
Let me think about this.
Just put you in the box.
I'll think about this. I'll talk with my PR agent and I'll get back to you.
Deal. Uh, uh, I mean, this is a good handed call, I think.
Yeah.
Sure.
We're gonna say.
Get in there, buddy. Yeah, it's a good hand to call.
Yeah, so suit the lines. We don't squeeze.
Hmm, it's a odd, odd, it's low check hijack.
Cause last time we were on this spot with a suited ten. And I wanted to do it, but it was a suited nines I wanna.
Hey, Mike.
I don't think so. It was, it was later position and I think we were shallower than eighty big blinds.
I like it, Louis, at this.
Jack nine, Jack eight might be good.
I don't think it's bad, but I I think it's gonna be tense.
Might have got lucky here.
Yeah, you like, I mean, look at that. That's not bad. The nine, the low ones are in there. I think it's, yeah, it's pretty good. Pretty good. Um, this is. No, they're they're too deep. Um, this is an asymmetric spot. I think we just probably fold. Yeah, fold.
Hmm, last please.
Um. I'm gonna fold. Yeah, uh, that's close. We looked at. I think nine, seven, nine, seven, I would flick it in. I would flick in nine, seven, but I think I'm gonna fold nine, six. This is gonna call. I think we looked at this earlier. That is close, right?
I think this is.
Yeah.
Call. I'm calling nine, seven, folding nine, six.
That's where I'm at too, Louis.
Oh. Nailed it.
Yeah, have to process it.
The other spot was thirty big ones.
I can't run that. I only have the tournament GT, GTO.
Oh.
Uh, but you have to have. All the chips. Uh, dude, there's too many callers, man. All the chips, I think.
Too many cooks.
Maybe, maybe you're right. Maybe you're right. I don't know. Too big to. Well, it's.
Too many cooks in the kitchen.
Yeah, too many, so you can just go with it, right?
Yeah.
Twenty-seven and a half. Yeah, yeah, I wanna, yeah, that'll be a great pizza. Fifteen people making a pizza.
Whenever, whenever there's like a third of your stack in the middle, I'm just shoving it.
Honestly, um, I think there's some math behind that, Scotty, um, how that kind of works. It just starts preferring jamming in a lot of those spots. You know, I, 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 I think you could, I was gonna say call, but it's not calling, so.
We can't scam anyone here.
I don't know, can you hold this?
I have to talk with pre-flop academy. They have to allow me to scam people if we could. It's no fun otherwise. I was gonna get you, was gonna get Ken.
We're gonna get. Yeah, they need to, they need to have the option there at least to bait us.
At least like enable the scams.
Yeah, you were gonna get me there, cuz I definitely would have said call.
Call, I was gonna call.
Okay.
Honestly, they're pretty, they're pretty good. They're, they're very receptive. They'll probably implement that.
Scan mode.
Yeah, scan mode activated.
Oh.
Um, yeah, this is gonna be a, this is gonna be a good call, I think.
Yeah.
And there's the nine, six suited call.
Fold.
Oh.
We're not doing good against the cutoff at all here.
Uh, okay, okay.
We're not doing really good against them.
What do you do with ace king? Jan?
Um, I would jam ace king off, maybe not all in raise ace king suited.
Pocket tens.
I think you need to jam either if you're.
Pocket tens is kind of the box. I think you might still jam pocket tens. You're probably gonna be kind of wide here just because we cover the cutoff by such a reasonable margin. And he's gonna have to fold basically everything if we go bananas.
So bucket then you wanna go aggro?
I think maybe.
King, queen suited, king, jack suited. Are you calling here with these?
I'm folding here, the same, the same.
King, queen suited, king, yeah.
I don't think you have much of a calling range here is the problem. And I don't know if those are strong enough to go bananas with.
Hmm. Okay, so we fold?
I would fold here, yes. Oh, look at this, there's no jamming, no jamming really. And I had it backwards. I said ace king off, it wants the extra equity if you're gonna actually jam.
Yeah, cuz it's probably cuz there's that many chips going in.
Yeah, um, pocket tens, though, is playing aggressively.
Yeah. Makes sense. I would jam her.
Oh, dude, you gotta fold. I think you gotta call or fold here. Like, it's probably gonna fold.
Wow.
What was the, what was the three bet size on the previous one? So he raised six, they call six. What did we three bet to?
One point seventy-five six, less than two weeks. So that's like eleven bits?
Something like that. It's a very, it's a, it's a click.
Yeah, it's basically a click back.
Okay.
Feels like we're folding very time here.
Uh, dude, it's EP, EP one, EP two. Like, what are we doing here?
You don't flip one big nine with king queen.
No.
Ever.
No, you dominated too much.
What's that EP one, what's that EP two flating range consist of? Ace, queen suited, king, queen suited. Ace, jack suited, pocket jacks, pocket tens, like.
The other king, queen.
The other king, queen. Like, honestly, you're just smoked first, that, those range, those calling ranges even. Um, you might get a little frisky with the solver special here, I think.
Please, sometimes, no.
It's cause not, and it's a call.
Wow. Okay.
Yeah, remember the button has a calling range here, so.
Right, I thought we got a little bit out of line with this combo, honestly, myself.
Oh, man, they're gonna put us in the box. That's the box, that's the box.
Yeah, but the box is good because look here, look what the box says.
Yeah, I mean, like, I don't, what we're covered is the one problem. You can't fold kings, you just can't fold kings. I'm all in.
Yeah, that, that number you're showing, Louis, was accounting for ICM and all in the EV, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not exactly it as well.
So, the interesting part here is queens, like, I would have probably let go of queens here.
Oh, yeah, jacks, look at jacks. Look at, seeing the church, the holy, the holy grail of tournament poker.
You're, you're big enough here to have some fold equity too, maybe, so.
Maybe, maybe.
Not in real life.
They're gonna do it to us again.
They're gonna do it again. We're in the box again. Um, you know, I'm going to fold.
I break, I snap fold.
Yeah, this is cutoff calling an early position raise.
Exactly, that's, that was the differentiating factor. It's EP two jamming. It's not like middle of the field.
I agree.
Uh, so we fold?
I'm folding this in games too, like not just in solver, in game unfolding.
Yep, me too.
Okay.
Lots to learn.
Yeah, and with kings, you just gotta cry.
Cry, tears.
We did see, we did see the one today where you didn't even call with kings. We saw the kings fold.
Like, do we even have an overcalling range here? This is where I get confused. And there's already three in, like, I always feel like we don't get the calling range.
Alright.
I wanna call this, though.
I do wanna call, but I don't know that it's a thing.
Okay, so Ken.
We can't call, I wanna fold.
Ken, do you see the screen here?
Yeah.
It's a good call, right?
I mean, I don't know.
We can set mine, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Eighty bigs.
Uh, it's twenty percent. Yeah, I guess we're just getting them right just enough.
So calling is probably the best plan, right, Ken?
I don't know, man, like, I don't know. Oh, there's no calling, so then I'll fold, good.
There's no calls.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm out. I, I, that's why I get confused. There's already three people in the pot. I'm like, do we ever really get to overcall, right?
Is it the squeeze or just a fold?
I would.
Never fold. I've been doing this wrong.
What do you call normally?
Yeah, man, I wanna hit the seven with these bunch of people and stack somebody.
I think it's fine to call in game.
Is, is it the squeeze?
Think.
I, I think.
Do you know what I think?
Look at the blinds, that level of three betting.
What do you think, Dom?
You gotta have squeezed the.
Uplift Academy also use HRC for their simulations and um, in HRC you have the option, how many overcalls are possible. So maybe they just allow the three over or two overcalls for a raise.
And maybe, maybe that's right.
I mean, you can change the sim.
Maybe that's right, cuz there's never a calling range after three players are. I haven't seen one, so is this a strategy or is it the like HRC limitation? I'm gonna add a bio solver back to my computer and then get back the old, good old, the good, good old the. Monker solver charts and on and on and my old.
Hey, so these uh, the, I've talked with them about this and all of these. All of their charts on pre-flop academy, these are all monker charts. So I think we've cross compared some of these multi-way spots in um, HRC at one point. So, and I think it's just a function that there's not really calls after there's two people in the pot. Like, you, you could, you could look at the spot and figure it out, but um. I think when there's four people, three people already in the pot, you just don't really overcall too much.
Okay.
Then, yeah, the note I have from like when we did our studies work before is that the only person who has a flating range is the big blind here. The small blind does not flat against three players.
Right, right. And I had these same questions that you guys are asking now when I first looked at squeezing ranges was like. What, is this a limitation of the simulation or is this like um, what the strategy is actually doing? And the point Peter just made, in addition to like looking at him cross referencing with HRC. Like, they still have call ranges in the big blind, so they do have calling inputs. It's just they're not chosen. Right?
Yeah, you, you can say, uh, you can tell the solver just uh, make the last, or always call if you close the action, that's possible. So big blind can always call. Because he always close the action.
Chip BB, jam.
I mean, I could force the button to call there in HRC, but that tree would be huge. It would take hours to run. It's not something I could get quickly.
So, and so, in English, why would you not wanna call? Pocket sevens, pocket sixes, pocket fives there.
I think it just becomes a reverse implied odds thing. I, I, I don't have a great answer, Scotty. I don't have a great answer, to be honest.
That's a, that, that's a reasonable one. I mean, the only, the only ones I can think of is reverse implied odds or that the small blind and big blind are massively incentivized to squeeze and you're never gonna get to see the flop. And I don't think that's true in the real world, but those are the only reasons I can think of.
I think we can let this go, just call seven, six, six, five.
That's what I had in mind, but even seven, six is a bit thin here.
Yeah.
I'm a, I'm a fish, guys. Come on, play in Pennsylvania.
Late position call.
Equal stacks, uh, I think we call.
Call it.
Yep.
Oh, my god.
No, no. You guys got me. You guys got me. Why did I not fold?
It's equal stacks. I thought it might be.
I didn't think about it, honestly, I.
Oh, no, dude. So like, why, why would you call more equal stacks? Yeah, why would you call more equal stacks? Honestly, this is even higher ICM pressure. Because it's like, there's five people that need to go bust and everyone has an equal opportunity of busting now. Which is gonna make ICM pressure even higher. The risk premiums here are through the roof. Look at kings, kings are like. Not even, kings are folding.
I was so wrong.
Cuz I'm like, man, I gotta triple up here. I'm winning this tournament. Everyone else, they got shit.
This is the highest ICM spot that we've probably looked at right here. This is like the tightest spot, I think.
Yeah. Aces.
Yeah, this is like, I mean.
I'm never folding kings there, ever.
No.
Well, so like, you know, it, it becomes one of those things, like a thirty-five man tournament. The probability of you winning the tournament goes kind of through the roof. If you pick up that pot, if everyone has ten big blinds, so I could definitely make an argument for calling kings there.
I don't think with that many people left that that's really significant. Like, I mean, by the time you get down to the final table, that hand's not gonna mean shit.
Yeah, maybe you're right. Maybe it is a table or two big.
Hands, you get to apply a lot of ICM pressure to the table.
That's why I think I would never fold kings there, for sure, still, but.
I'm not folding kings for sure. Obviously, I didn't fold queens, so I fold kings.
I have a lot.
Alright.
Fold.
I don't think, I don't think I have a good enough understanding of the uh, equal stack scenarios.
Somebody was, I mean, there was a narrative going around the group for a while, like equal stacks doesn't mean ICM. But it's like, it's the exact opposite as you go shorter and shorter in chips. Like, when you're, if you're equal stacked sixty big blinds, ICM is pretty diminished. But if you're equal stacked ten big blinds, ICM is very, very high.
Yeah, I'm surprised somebody was saying that. That's uh, that's pretty wrong.
Yeah, think about playing satellites with like two and three big blinds, like.
Well, you just, you just have to fold so much stuff, man.
Anybody squeezing here or is it just a fold?
I think it's mostly a fold. You can mix in squeezing, though.
I, I agree with Nick. Ace, eight, ace, eight, eight, seven, same difference.
Yeah, the seven's gonna fall below. Be on the solver special here. Okay, yeah, he's twenty big nine effective.
Uh, I mean, this is like, you could go either way here. I fold in game.
Let's fold.
The opener only has twenty big blinds, you're gonna fold.
Oh, I think you're right, Pete. I, I, I missed that. Yeah, well, it's whatever.
Oh.
Squeezer. Alright, so, alright, here's a question.
Yeah.
Damn it, Louis, you didn't let me ask my question. I was gonna ask if there's a jamming range here because I don't believe people are jamming here.
Yeah. I ain't jamming his jack, though, whatever you say.
All that cutoff, cutoff button ranges are super wide at eighty.
Yeah, that's the thing, Pete, right? Like, you don't have a huge jamming range at eighty usually, but you have the three widest ranges and two of them have capped themselves.
Yeah.
So you kind of get to really go bananas here. You know, he's only got six big blinds. I'm out.
Oh, you don't completely, you gotta call.
I'm out.
Call. You're a call, too strong. Making a mistake here. Well, there's a point one, right, but. Alright, well, I'll tell you what, guys, I think it's time to review some hands now, so uh, you guys got marked hands you want me to put in the machine?
I actually have.